You ready?
So sorry.
Okay.
Story of my life.
Welcome, are we ready?
You're good.
Good. Welcome to the city council work session for Tuesday, March twenty first. Everyone's in attendance, so roll call will be suspended since we're all here. I would like to ask if somebody would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I will mayor, if you want me to.
Sure.
May please stand and repeat the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask if uh, somebody would like to uh, give us an invocation?
I'll do that.
Thanks Lynn.
My father in heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity to be here together as a council to represent the city. We're thankful for the city that we represent, for the people that live here. We're thankful for the moisture that has fallen. Father, we pray at this time that as the snow melts, that it will find the right course, that it will not affect our citizens negatively as spring and summer comes quickly. We're thankful for all that thou has blessed us with and continue to pray for blessings upon our good city and its residents that live here. Pray that we'll be inspired to know the things that we should do and say to help our residents and to help our city grow in the right way, these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Getting right into business, we look at the flood situation, the water in the canyon. I look at it multiple times a day. As of right now, there's almost thirty and a half inches of water sitting at the at the seventy eight hundred foot where our snow tell site is at the me- at the meadows. There could be more higher, we don't have snow tell reports that would go up to the top of the canyon, which is around the eight thousand foot line. And we go beyond that on the west side of the canyon and up to uh, over nine thousand feet in in lower water holler and across the Sullivan's. And uh, there's a lot of concern and there's a lot of people that are concerned, how are we doing? What are we doing? What are the plans to make sure that we're mitigating the flood? Certainly, we talk about it every day, but we also talk about it monthly in the meetings and those meetings will get bi-weekly and then possibly weekly and then possibly daily, depending on how how it looks and how we handle the mitigation of the water. About a month ago, after the last meeting, Summit Creek turned the full stream down from the diversion dam located about three quarters of a mile up Santaquin Canyon and rather than run it out to the reservoir, which we had been doing it and the reservoir was near filling at that point, Summit Creek took two actions. One was to divert the water at the dam towards our debris basin in and in that debris basin, we could then check and see what kind of percolation we were getting from the water. I think that was an excellent move because we were going five to nearly six second feet of water. And if that means anything to you, great, if not, it's like the amount of water that two full fire engines can pump at any given time. It's three thousand gallons of water a minute or more than three times what we get out of our springs. And that's just kind of the the flow through the winter. It's now starting to creep up a little bit and it'll creep up as we we start to get other things that come along. Now, the other good thing that I think Summit Creek did along with Norm's suggestion was to go in to look at reservoir number two where it was full. Why take all that hit? Let's start moving that water down our channel. One that kind of verified the channel, it's given us a chance to clean things out and get it going. And uh, water has flowed now from reservoir number two down through that channel that goes by our industrial park to highway six, down a pipeline along highway six into Yules Pond and then catches the the uh, Highline Canal and it has been going into the uh, at this point, I believe it's going into Utah Lake. Which after a month, now the difference is the water up the canyon, the five and six second feet of water, that three thousand gallons a minute that's coming down, hasn't made it to the first little basin. The first little basin in the flood control. And and you might say, oh, that worries me and what are we doing? We're actually saturating it a little bit, but the water is percolating so fast now at a slower runoff that we're getting water into the aquifer. That's important. If if we take high end water, which is high runoff water, you get a lot of silt.
Yep.
We're still getting carbon that'll be coming down and that just won't percolate as much, that dirty water, as much as we can get with this clean water that we're getting right now. And the water will start changing colors and and you'll actually, if you wanna, if you wanna see some things, it's quite interesting. As our our stream starts to flow, it's it's kind of muddy and then it goes red. It goes, it's dark because of the pines and the and uh, some of the other tributaries that feed it. Then you get some clay layers that get you up to about that seven thousand foot level and it turns red. So then at that point, when you see that red, you know that we are at that that water level that we can read every day, but that transfers at the seven thousand foot mark all ac- all across the canyon. Now, then it goes from the red back to a kind of a gray and then a real gray and the real gray are the high ones. Once you transfer out of that, it's just kind of a signal. When you drive up the canyon, you can almost look at the water and say, oh, I know where that snow snow line is, where that melt line is coming in. And I know this is probably baloney to most people, but I've lived this all my life. And and the old boys could even tell you when we were at the point that the high water was gonna turn. So I'll bring those into you as as we go through this, but that's the long story. There has been mitigation processes that are going through. The city crews are handling the channel, the mitigation of the channel, moving the water westward so that we can utilize that channel. Also, the channels that go down into the the basins that are prior to the freeway and yet below our debris basin. So we can still run thirty to sixty second feet of water. So if if six second feet of water is three uh, three thousand gallons a minute, sixty seven, sixty second feet is ten times that. And we can handle that down through the pipes that get us through the city. And I think a lot of that was shown in twenty nineteen's flood. But uh, our crews are doing a fantastic job. We're using their time and having to pick up some extra machinery to make sure those things are working clean. And they've done a phenomenal job. I've I've ridden most of it, I ride once a week with uh, Phil Rowley, the president of Summit Creek, so that we're just talking how things are progressing throughout. We don't have the ability to weep water down through town in all of the ditches like we did in in eighty-three. In eighty-three, there were several ditches, six to eight ditches, we could turn water down and then put them out into the big fields and orchards north of town and west of town. And to be honest with you, those are mostly homes right now or places we can't put the water. So anyway, there've been some great decisions made, some great preparations, even down to sandbags and the availability of sandbags and fill-in filling stations. You know, we may want to look at them and change a few and add to it. We met with UDOT yesterday, they said they have extras that if we need them, they can bring them. And uh, anyway. Did I blow the whole thing or what?
No, you're doing great, man. This is awesome. I just leaned over to Sid- to Jason and said, man, I'm glad I don't have to tell this whole story, this is awesome. Somebody that's lived it for longer than I have, this is cool. Just great, we we uh, so I appreciate the mayor, we are putting about four million gallons a day down into the aquifer, which is fantastic to help bring our groundwater up. It helps with our pumping, it helps with more long-term sustainability for both our springs, not in this case, but but overall, if we're perky percolating that much into the ground here, then that same thing is happening with the snow melt that's happening as well going into our springs. So that's fantastic. We we've had a period of dryer years with our springs, so this will help to bolster that. I wanna thank the the our our city emergency manager, Chris Lindquist, he invited me, actually invited myself, but he indicated to me last week that we were, uh, there was a preparedness fair. I knew about the preparedness fair from a different realm, but as we went through this high water discussion, I I knew about that and I asked the mayor if he would be okay and Chris if he could get me a table. I went over there and spent three hours to help the state presidents and the and the leaders and the emergency managers in the in the stakes here kind of help them understand where we're at and I kinda wanna go through that same presentation with you guys if that's okay. Probably a little more in-depth than I was able to do at a table at the at the preparedness fair.
I want to ask you a quick question for you.
Sure.
You said four million gallons, how often a day?
A day.
Going into the aquifer?
Uh-huh, four to four and a half million gallons a day and about six CFS, six to seven is is the six point five CFS is the is about four million gallons a day. And so that's going directly into the aquifer that helps our wells, helps irrigation company wells. Obviously, we're a we're a large shareholder in the irrigation company, so just helps our overall water position. As the mayor said, we drained that reservoir, now we have that reservoir available for the irrigation company for the water that comes down. So it's it's great, it's fantastic.
That's about sixty-three acre feet of water, so it's about three quarter, well, it's sixty acre piece, foot uh, foot deep or sixty acres straight up of water, so.
Does that amount of water stay consistent or will it go up with more water? I mean, like we said,
Oh, it'll it'll go way up.
Water change is different, but it gets more silt and stuff, does the the percolation stay the same or will it go?
E- 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 all of the above, it'll go up. So let me, I'll I'll get that, I'll get through the story here, I got a lot of, I got a lot of really um, informative photos and or aerials and graphs and everything that I'll go through and then, I I don't wanna discourage your questions, but some of this stuff is coming up.
I want us to play engineer for a minute.
Are you gonna address Pole Canyon?
We, I will do, I'll say that then. It's not specifically addressed in here, but if I don't get back to it, come come back, cause that's one of the hotspots that we've already.
That's why I'm asking.
Yep, yep, if I if I miss that for some reason, let me know and I'll I'll get back to it. So this is a map that we used at the at the preparedness fair, just showing creeks and channels and debris basins and locations where the water can travel and typically will. Some of the things are 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 marked, some of them are not, like the the southbound or the westbound channel that comes from the debris basin once it fills up is is not marked. We we a- and again, I'll get to that here in just a second, but eventually all of the water will make it to, well, should make it to the irrigation company pond over here. And then we can send a lot of that out to the west to go to to Janola and out to White Lake, to the lake that will help us to be able to have the room that we need in that in the, that the irrigation company needs in that storage pond there. So this is, this is just a map that I showed and people were, was great, cause people was, oh, there's my house. Yeah, you're you're in pretty good shape, there's your house. Well, you know, if we need sandbags in your area, we'll come talk to you and let you know. The mayor, the mayor put out a a a letter, as you know, on the website on Saturday morning and just said, you know, look, we've got, we've got decades worth of systems that have been built or in place and have functioned properly. Have there been a few high water years? Yeah, eighty-three was a high water year where that, you know, if we get something like that again, which we're not there and I'll I'll show you that in just a second, we're not at eighty-three, even though the the reports keep coming back that we're the earliest, the most we've ever had this early in the season, that is, that is somewhat accurate, but we're only about the fifth biggest water year. And keep in mind that the reports that we're getting is statewide, not necessarily, I'm drilling down right into our drainage and what we have to work with. Okay? So that's that, um, let me, let me go to some of my graphs. This this graph is a little bit busy, but what I did was I, we've had a snow tell site up in the meadows about seventy-eight hundred feet, as the mayor said, since twenty sixteen. So all of these lines represent a year from twenty sixteen till today. All of them except for one, the big green line is is a is a projection of what nineteen eighty-three could have looked like in our drainage, but we didn't have, we did not have a snow tell site up there, but what I've been able to do is that I've correlated, this this red line right here uh, at thirty point four inches of water, snow water equivalent, the snow is seven feet deep up there right now, it's it's eighty-four inches deep. But the snow water equivalent, which is the number that we really wanna be know, be paying attention to, is how much water is up there. This is today, this this red line that's kind of the dashed and less like, the lighter red line is nineteen, is is twenty nineteen, which was our biggest year on record that we have with our snow tell site. This big green line right here is nineteen eighty-three. So we are just barely, we we, in fact, we are more than thirty percent less than nineteen eighty-three. Even though it's been a banner year, even though we've had a lot of snow early, statewide, this is the highest that we've ever been this early in the season statewide, but again, I'm drilling down to our local area, so you can see that that i- if we keep getting a little bit more and a little bit more, we could get to a nineteen eighty-three, but we're not there yet.
We're well above this though.
Last year.
Well, so, but but pay attention to where you're at, so the the bottom on the axis is the dates. So we're a little bit more than what we were in twenty nineteen, but we're only about, if I look at this, we're only about two inches more of water, so less than ten percent more water than we had in twenty nineteen. Okay? So what what you're really seeing here, are very observant, is that when it gets hot, it comes off and it comes off fast. So what we really wanna see is, we wanna see this attenuation, we wanna see it getting warm and then getting cold, cooler, and then getting warm and then getting cooler and then getting warm and getting cooler. We wanna see that attenuate and as long as mother nature will cooperate with that, we will be, we will be doing just fine. So the reason I point out twenty nineteen and nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-three was an anomaly. It 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 just stayed cold, 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 cold and then all of a sudden it got hot and all of it came off and we were thirty percent more water. But twenty nineteen, this this channel that I just talked about going to the west right here, around our Pole Canyon and out to the to the uh, freeway and down through the townhomes and out to reservoir number two, we didn't even activate that channel in twenty nineteen. Even with nearly just a little bit less water than we had today, have today, we did not activate that westbound channel. Now, we don't activate it, mother nature does, but but I can tell you that there were some points in time when we were, so the mayor said six second feet or six CFS, cubic feet per second. There were times in twenty nineteen where we were a hundred and eighty CFS. Thirty times what we have coming down the canyon today. So the answer to your question is that if we get more water in there and it spreads over a bigger surface, we're gonna get more percolation. We're gonna get more stuff going into the ground, but it isn't gonna take, six second feet is pretty easy to lose in the gravel, but a hundred and eighty is a little harder. So it fills up the basin and it attenuates and it fills up the basin and it lets it out. The the system that I showed here, this this system in in twenty nineteen ha- uh, was able to handle, let me, let me go to a different graph here and I'll show you. This is really busy and I apologize, we're still in the in the throes of just kinda putting this all together here. What what happened to my? So this, this one right here will tell us what's happening, okay? This is eighty-three, again, very, very busy, what you're seeing is six second feet, six second feet, five second feet, five second feet, up to a peak of uh, what does that say? Ninety-eight feet, ninety-eight second feet. Almost twenty eighteen times what we're talking about having today. This big set of of numbers right here, this big jumble of graphs, that's temperature. So as the temperature goes up, what happens? The snow comes off. This is a stream gauge, this is not snow melt. This is, this is snow melt, but in the form of being measured at the stream gauge where where you can see, like I say, we had in twenty nineteen, we had, in in some cases, we had, let's see, what's the top of this one right here? Hundred and ten CFS. Now, yeah, I'm moving it around a little bit. Anyway, so just so you know, that's the way that the system works. The system, we have a, we have a debris basin at the mouth of the canyon that at about thirty-five to fifty CFS will hel- hold a week or two's worth of water. If we get up to a hundred and hundred and fifty, then it fills up really fast, but then that's when the other systems that we have going around, all the pipe systems that the irrigation company has, all the ditches, all the culverts, everything that we have in place that have been working for decades, works really, really well and and we can handle more than a hundred CFS without activating that westbound channel. Now, when we activate that westbound channel, we can probably handle another fifty to eighty CFS going that direction. So we can, now, again, remember that that reservoir at the mouth of the canyon attenuates that, right? So we we will hardly ever see a hundred and eighty CFS down here. If we see it at the stream gauge up in the, up in the mouth of the canyon up here, then we're we're likely gonna see a half to two thirds of that actually making it to to any given different direction, because we've got all those fingers and those arms that can go out and send water in all kinds of different directions, okay? So so there's a, there's a whole bunch more, again, this is the, this is the snow depth. Even in twenty nineteen, we had more snow. I don't have nineteen eighty-three on here, cause we don't have nineteen eighty-three. Even in nineteen eighty-three, they didn't measure, in Payson, they didn't, the Payson Ranger Station, they didn't even measure the snow depth. All they measured was the snow water equivalent. That tells you that that's the important number that you're looking for, right? How much water's up there and how fast is that gonna come off? How fast is it gonna get hot and and melt off, right? The the two, the two biggest concerns that we have right now are a rain on snow event in the canyon, not down here. This, the rain that we've been having down here has been doing exactly what it's supposed to be doing. Ten days ago, I took a picture of a home on, up above a Summit Ridge in in the ti- in the higher part of Summit Ridge and there was about eight inches of snow all the way around the home. That was on a Saturday, the following Wednesday, I went up there again and there was no snow on any, around any of the homes, even on the north side. So the rain's doing exactly what it's supposed to be doing, it's melting the snow. If you look at the south facing slopes up on the hills, what's happening? The brown is creeping up, right? The white's going away and the brown's creeping up, it's doing what it's supposed to be doing. The the two biggest factors that we could have is a rain on snow event, a heavy rain on snow event, which hasn't happened and we don't anticipate, but it could happen. The other one is real hot, real fast for real long. If we get two weeks straight of eighty degree weather plus, we're gonna be filling more sandbags and we're gonna be trying to direct flows around areas that that could potentially be of of a concern, okay? And there are some of those areas. One of those areas is Pole Canyon, Art, and you brought that up. The biggest problem with Pole Canyon, as you know, is that we had a fire in twenty nineteen up there, up in that canyon. And that that creates what's called a burned over condition. When you have a burned over condition, you've just made that entire forest a parking lot. There's no, no grass, no trees, no stability of soil, no anything. And so in twenty-one, the fall of twenty-one, we had that issue where debris flows came down. But what I would say is, there's, there's been some talk out there that that our system failed. I would disagree with that, because we did not flood one home. We lost no life, we did not lose one, flood one home. There was a little bit of landscaping and some dirt that got washed away in some, in some uh, park strip areas and front yards. Now, we we believe that we've addressed that now, we believe that we've uh, cleaned out the culverts, we've got some good culverts that are, by the way, the culverts that are in place going over Pole Canyon are about quadruple the size of the culverts that were there in nineteen eighty-three.
One thing to add to that was, there is some chatter on Facebook where people are talking about Pole Canyon failed and that failed up there and that is a lie. It did not fail, it carried where it had to carry, we're cleaning it out.
Yep.
Even now, to make sure that the other water comes through, but that that is put out, that is something along those lines is incorrect.
People on Facebook know everything.
Yeah.
So so that that's exactly right, there's been some some chatter out there that the system failed. But again, we didn't flood any homes, there was a little bit of landscaping, landscaping's pretty easy to replace. The, it followed the road down and and knocked probably three quarters of a mile in our roads. It it filled up some some inlets and we had to go suck the inlets out, that's, that's something that we do all the time anyway. But but the reality of it is, it made it all the way to those channel, those debris basins at the freeway and we didn't flood any homes. So no loss of life, no flood at homes, I I would call that a success rather than a failure. Now, again, I would never say that we're not gonna flood anybody, are we gonna have some high water that comes off? Absolutely. Are we gonna have some potential for flooding? Absolutely. Um, we've got our our emergency manager who's been working again with the three stakes in the area. Tomorrow night, they will be filling up to several thousand more sandbags, we already have a couple of thousand sandbags already ready on a truck, ready to be delivered wherever we need them. As we start seeing, again, a rain on snow event or hot weather and how fast it, if we can attenuate, then we're gonna be placing some sandbags, we're gonna be protecting homes. But but I would submit to you that that for the most part, and as much as we can possibly prepare for, we, the the mitigation efforts, as the mayor has indicated, are going really well. We've got our crews out burning ditches and 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 clearing all the the tree limbs and garbage and rocks and other things that could potentially clog up those systems. They're they're out cleaning them right now, we're we're gonna be renting a a track hoe to get down and and go west of the Allen Pond all the way to nearly to the freeway to to clean that out and bolster that out, get some trees out of the way and some other things and we're we're what what I would say is again, that we're doing all that we can do in preparation for this. What we need is to pray for mother nature to stop raining and help us warm, cool, a warm, cool, warm, cool, that's what we need. We've prayed for water, we've got it, now it's time to to uh, and we are making preparations for all those things, so.
The the crew did work on that channel all the way to the end today.
Oh, did they?
They had a track hoe in there and I I didn't see it, but uh,
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
Then they're ahead of me, which is not unusual, that's great. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Again, I would never tell anybody that we're not gonna flood, there's always that potential, but I believe that the systems that we have in place and and again, knowing where we're at with the snow water equivalent with two thousand nineteen, how that came off in two thousand nineteen, it was orderly and and we were able to to handle it. Now, there was some other potential issues that have been solved since then over reservoir number one for the irrigation company. We had some flooding over there, but we've we've taken, we've taken that that dam down now and and made it so that we don't have a a potential for a a dam breach over there. And so I I think that we're in pretty good shape as as best we can, if the, if mother nature will cooperate.
Well, you add one more factor in that in nineteen eighty-three, we didn't know as we met in meetings this early and talked about it, uh, we still were getting snow and very cold temperatures, but the one thing that we didn't do was discuss and bring down reservoir two. So the full force of this hit with reservoir two full. Now, I think we've been through it enough, we know exactly what to do and and uh, Summit Creek, uh, I believe we're right on top of all of that.
Absolutely, the the Summit Creek Water Management Project that we entered into clear back in two thousand eleven, several million dollars has been put in the ground with with large diameter thirty-six inch and and a little smaller pipe to to convey all of this water and and close off ditches and get water to the west through the Highline Canal. There, there's been a lot of work that's been done to to, so just to give you an idea, two thousand eleven statewide, we were about three hundred percent of snowpack. Right now, we're about two hundred or two hundred and ten percent of our normal snowpack. So even in two thousand eleven, it, which which we don't have a str- a stream gauge for or a snow tell site for, but two thousand eleven, we were, we had more snow and water up there then than we do now. And we were literally flooding fields and trying to send water everywhere that we could. And and again, I think it was successful, I don't believe that we flooded anybody in two thousand eleven, I have to go back and look, but I know in in twenty sixteen to seventeen and twenty eighteen to nineteen, when we've had the next two high water years from where we're at now on our, on our records, we we were able to handle it.
Two thousand eleven, houses north of uh, five hundred north in Santaquin had basements flooded, cause uh, window wells uh, filled up with water and broke the windows.
That that is correct, that is correct, you're right, I apologize for that. Okay. I I'm happy to answer any questions, I hope that the public will take some time and and review the materials that we presented. If anybody has any questions, the mayor in his statement on Saturday on the website has my email address, his email address and our emergency manager, Chris Lindquist's address. Chris and I speak daily and he sends me state situation reports and and we coordinate and I think we're, again, we're we're doing all that we can at this point in time to to mitigate and and plan for, it's gonna be the those two It's gonna be the, those two issues that if we have a, a big rain on snow event up the canyon. Or real hot, real fast, real long, then we could have some potential for flooding.
So if a citizen wants to get a few sandbags.
Have them call us, come and get them.
So they can do it now, they don't need to wait until possibly we're gonna flood this week, we get some, they ought to do it now, right? If they're worried.
Well, so if I can, you're exactly right, if we, if somebody needs five or ten sandbags, come and get them, we, we've got them filled, we'll give them to them. Two, two things, one I would say is, we don't need to hoard sandbags, we had a whole bunch of them. Uh, uh, moved from the, from the front porch of the offices and. Uh, one, one person appeared to take all of that we had out there, and so we're gonna be a little more measured about that. But one thing I can tell you is, even though you're seeing Saint George and even Springville and Mapleton and Logan flooding. Our runoff hasn't even started, folks, at six CFS. We are, we are just literally right at what we would normal, I mean, we're normally three to six CFS this time until it starts getting warm. So, we, we have not started our, our normal runoff, and, and the mayor hit it in his newsletter, in, in the March newsletter. It usually starts about the last week in April, in March, or the first week in April is when that starts. And, and again, we're happy to provide continual reports, situation reports, if we hear of any flooding, you know, we're happy to, to, to bring you up to speed on all of that. And all the preparations that are made, that are being made, we've got probably twenty or thirty thousand empty sandbags. We're gonna have several four, two to four thousand sandbags ready to go, and the ability to fill more, we've actually got some sand staged in different parts of the city. It, but if people want sandbags, have them come and talk to us, that's no problem at all. Um, we're, we're trying to, to measure that a little bit and make sure that we can respond accordingly where we need to go and where we need to be with those. But if somebody's concerned about their individual home, have them come talk to us, that's no problem, I know we've already given some out, so that's fantastic. Um, what I would say also is, please check your rain gutters and please make sure that your landscaping is such that it's moved. It's diverted away from the window wells, that, we, we've, I've heard of four homes now just this year. Where our runoff hasn't even started, but basements have flooded, that's all the snow that's just been on the ground. And, and improper drainage either from roof drains or into window wells or landscaping into window wells. So, if you have that situation at your home, start looking at doing something about it, because that's not, nothing that we do is gonna be able to change that. Okay, questions?
Then let's move on, upcoming agenda items. Mostly in the consent, we've got our usual budget planning and regular council meeting, meeting minutes. As well as the bills that we gotta pay, anything that's gonna come up with that that you need to discuss? Okay. Um, we do have a recognition today, and that will be with Brooklyn. And so she'll be right after the consent agenda, I think that's really cool, you know that? As long as mom's not nervous. Next, we have the interlocal agreement with Utah County on the elections. That's a standard one that we go through every year, so.
Every two years, yep, yep.
Okay, are there any questions with that? You're all running for your seat again? Or running from your seat again?
So just, just for the public's awareness, so there, there is an election, this is an election year. And the, the elections, uh, applications open June first and close June seventh, so. And there will be three council seats that will be available for election.
Whose are those?
Well, one would be yours, and one would be Dave's, and one would be Betsy's.
So please, lots of people sign up.
That would be fantastic.
Whatever we need, a bunch. I would say that everybody that knows it, how to do it, maybe ought to be here, so we got three. Don't they close like the second week in June or something?
Seventh of June. They can pick up their packets on May first, the, the candidate applications, we don't start accepting those until June first. Through June seventh, at five o'clock on June seventh, they, those will close, but they can pick up a packet before then. And Emily's already dutifully working on that as our awesome recorder.
Okay, the last thing, and we've got about twenty minutes, we're not gonna get into a lot of tax discussion tonight. But certainly we've been walking that way, and we need to discuss some things. So it's gonna be out in the air, and part of it was, uh, when we met last time and talked. We talked about the award of a contract to X Factor. Now, this is something that we have to look at, and I hope you've read all the stuff that you can and that you have answers to questions. Because I might very well ask them, how you feel and what needs to be done. And it may be, are you comfortable enough and knowledgeable enough? To know the direction that we have to go, and I, I think we need to be able to do that. Number one is, when you signed up for this job, it was to balance the budget. And we will not run over the budget, our options are, we don't balance it, we don't find a way to fund the things. Then the funding goes away, uh, when somebody says to us, oh, that's in the budget. Budget's a wish list to me, and always has been, and unless we have the funds to do things. Then, then the easy thing for us to say is, well, we don't need anybody like X Factor or anybody else. Because we either can't fund it, or we have to look at the long term. And, and the long term really is, where do we sit because of the. I don't wanna use terrible growth, but it's been astronomical growth that has happened over the last ten years. And, um, you know, there was a lot of, lot of praise in the past of people that said. Number one, it's so good, we haven't had to raise taxes, that's nice. But the second thing is, we've lived off of growth, and there's a whole history to this. That if it comes right down to it, we're gonna talk about all of that tonight. And, and, you know, I just wanna tell you that a year ago now, I was already in, in negotiations, talks, discussions with Norm. Or with Ben, that we can't be sustainable with, uh, growth. And, and you know, there were a lot of people in this town that were just, can I use the word bitchin? Because we were growing too bad, I can't use that, okay, strike that from the record, this damn bitchin. About, about the growth and, and as you have noticed since July one. Our, our, uh. Money, which, which had been counted on to come through impact fees and other things, dried up, went away. The only sustainable thing after great building to supply us with needs are taxes. And reluctantly, I think we've all looked at, what are our options here, how's the best way to do this? And, and to start with, we did a due diligence. Now, us as a council, you in particular, were a part of getting Zion's in. And listening to what they had for projections that would take us for the years coming up. Whether we had high growth or mid-growth or raised the taxes or didn't. And the, the ending of all of that was a big storyteller to us all. Because that, that took us most of six months to get through all of that. Uh, we worked with the, the people at Zion's Bank that really ripped through our, our budget. Through our numbers, through our revenues and expenditures and everything else, I think they came up with. Some options, and the options are kinda scary, and, and that is, we need to look. At, we could maybe scrape by for a year if we cut severely and, and we did start cutting. If you remember right, we started with no, uh, no wants, all needs. And if we get a few wants in there, yeah, we had to do a few things, but. There's a lot of things that are outstanding here that we've signed up to, and we are now the recipients. Of what's happened over the last ten years, and I'm gonna say that once because. Nothing was ever done with the taxes, in fact, the mill levy was reduced to equate to the mill levy of twenty-ten. And that becomes a problem over time, especially if you're not gonna have unprecedented growth for ad nauseam. But our, our growth has curtailed, and every two weeks in this meeting, we have looked at building permits. And how things were going, and I'm sure you have a number for us tonight, but I'm sure it's not over sixty. So, uh, a year ago, we were in better shape. Than where we have been in the last year, and that would have been only from January to first of February. Made up for what we've had since from July till now. So, you know, there's some serious things we have to look at, and there's also some serious things that you need to look at. Every one of you, with the responsibilities that you have. If you're over the police, if you're working with the fire, if you're over public works, if you're doing any of those things, if you're making statements. We're gonna get this in town, and, and you know, we've, we've had a few hackles go up when I've said, hey, we can't go that way. And hey, we can't do this, and hey, we can't plan for this right now. But in the end, how do we get through it? Now, as we studied this with X Factor, they came recommended through MAG, they came with high credentials. But more than anything, I wanna admit, I'm not a CPA, but we have very talented people. That are not only doing our budget, but are being checked by CPAs and have a, a full accounting of everything that goes on. Even after we finish up the books for the year, so. The scary thing to me is, we can say that we can do it. I've, I have felt personally that I would appreciate the help. If you, if you guys remember right, a year and a half ago, there was such a stink in this town that. The information didn't get out there, why don't we have a big automatic board so that everybody could read it as they drove by it at forty to seventy miles an hour? And you could read everything that was going on, only at the cost of about a quarter of a million dollars to do it right. You could put up a smaller one, but it would only have one line on it, and you could maybe do that kind of thing, and we nixed it. Because we didn't wanna spend that kind of money. And I guess we, or you guys, because you're gonna vote on this tonight, have to look at it and say. Is there a reason that we want to not only know ourselves, because these guys are professionals in taxes? That we get educated, but also that we can get that information to every household. Not the few that wanna look at it on Facebook, but every household, because we represent them all. We don't represent the few that call us, you know, but we listen to them, and we find out what's there. And to me, this is a gamble, a gamble to the positive. Are, are we gonna invest in this city so much that, that we have a backing? As a city council, to be able to spell it out, get the information in their hands, have the right public meeting. Almost that would take care of itself, that's how I envision it. But with us knowing what's going on, unless you feel more comfortable, because unless you were here in two thousand ten. All you are the recipient of that change every year that's been knocked down because of inflation. And that inflation number has gone grave deep last year, and this year, we're already two-tenths over what that was. And I'm, I'm concerned, number one, that we've got information from Zion's Bank that's telling us. We need to act on something, and they've spelled it out very well. I like the thoughts that maybe we do this with all the prudence, all the knowledge, all the input. That we possibly can, and if we don't have it, then we rule accordingly. Now, there's one other thing that bothers me in this, and that is. If we can't answer tho- those questions, not, not this week, but in. Of kind of how we're going and what we need to do and how we can justify this. The only option you leave yourself is, number one, well, maybe we'll go for taxes. But all it takes is a little bit, and they throw it on the ballot, that means we won't see it for another year. A year and a half from now before it comes up, because it wouldn't be available until twenty-twenty-five. That worries me, and it worries me because of the apathy that we have had over the last ten years of letting that mill levy settle to a point. That it's almost unrecoverable, and, and to me, that's a travesty. Because we relied on that building so much, but it was easy to sit back and say, oh, we have money, we can take care of it. But right now, we don't, and we have to be responsible. And, and I'm hoping that all of you have, have looked at the information we've gone through and said. I wanna know what's going on, I wanna be able to tell people, this is the best way to go. But I do wanna tell you one last thing too, and that is, we have a staff that has changed a hundred and eighty from what it was last year. There were people that were calling for the relieving of certain people, and some people left. And in most cases, we've filled those positions, and, but we've filled them with very qualified people, and I like that. Some we didn't even fill, we dispersed a, a bit of their responsibility and have soaked it in. We have bit the bullet starting in May and June of last year. And the changes that we've made, I think are very good, but I think. Personally, and I don't have a vote certainly, but I think we need to be responsible for the people in this city. Or we have to be able to answer, why do we wanna go this way or that way? And one is, why do we wanna go for them, for X Factor, or why do we wanna do away with it? You're the ones that are gonna hold the cards, and, uh. I, I just feel like it's almost a, uh. Turning point back to the city to ensure that they have full information from the get-go. Not from three or four months down the road, but right off the bat. It's basically opening our kimono right off the bat, and, uh. That's what I want us to think about, so. I've probably said more than I wanted to say about that whole thing, but this is an important resolution, it comes with a decision because of where we are. And the decisions we've not only had to make through the year, but. To go forward, and how that could affect us, not only for six months. But maybe up to two years, and if you go back to the Zion's thing, what does two years give us? It may be a whole lot worse, so, uh, make sure you're up to speed on that, and where we stand with the report. Anything else? Did I talk too much?
Now, now I gave you a, a printout I had about a, a bill from the legislature about the levy thing, were you able to make any sense out of that at all?
I don't, I'm, I'm not sure how that applies to us, I've gotta, I've gotta check with the auditor on that, find that out, I don't know.
Yeah, I, do you have any questions, is there something we ought to talk about? Because we're gonna be talking about it again in, in a, in a hour.
Every community is different, we have our own sociality here in, in Santa Quin. Is this X Factor Company gonna recognize that and adapt what they propose to do? To fit our needs and, and our desires?
I, I believe they are, but they're also just out of Lehigh, PGE, somewhere like that, isn't it? They, they are local to us, they understand the, the demographics of the area and the people. You know, they may not understand the difference between a farmer and a, and a. You know, they may not understand the difference between a, a farmer and a, and a mechanical engineer, but you know, uh, I believe they understand the, the demographics basically of Utah County and how we fit in and, and what our needs are and why we can justify it. They will most certainly look at all the information from Zion's and, and others that we have pulled together. Anything that you guys would wanna bring up and put in the middle of it. And there may be some things that you wanna cut right now.
We're not voting on a tax increase or anything tonight. We're voting on.
X Factor. But X Factor is really, right now, unless you feel like we have an expert that's sitting here that can guide us through absolutely everything that we need to, including contacting of every individual in town of holding those, those, uh, open houses and everything else. This is where their time becomes invaluable, not because we as a city have to pay for their services. It's what they can provide with those services to get the information into people's hands. And there may be one or two people out there that are just a whiz or have a pocket full of gold and are willing to hand it over. But we've gotta do the best we can on this. Don't you think? Boy, it went quiet. Brett, could you read them? There Miranda writes? Strike that from the record. Okay. That was serious. I, I just feel we are at a crossroads and the crossroads is gonna define us. And it's gonna define this city moving forward and, uh, we need to be a part of it enough to where we have answers. And no is not an answer and just an outright yes is not an answer. It's an answer. And it's wisdom, it's finding the facts, it's getting the facts into people's hands. I think it does it in leaps and bounds going this way. Do you agree?
Agreed, Mayor.
Anything that I missed with X Factor?
No, I, I would indicate that we do have, uh, currently in the budget, some, some public involvement, um, expense that we could use for this. And so, we do have that avai- available to us. It wouldn't, the, the funds are available. It's just a matter of how you direct us to use them. A- anything of that nature would come, obviously, as a contract like this to, an, an agreement to, to be able to allocate those funds accordingly.
Have any of you done any information looking, reading or otherwise on X Factor? Do you have anything that you wanna talk about? Okay. I didn't even know that a place like this existed until we found it.
Team highly recommended from Pleasant Grove City as well. They helped, they've helped Pleasant Grove City with a very similar, uh, discussion to help inform their residents.
This is not a shell game that we're trying to play. What we're trying to do is make sure we're making good, responsible, uh, decisions. To look at that graph that Norm put up for the losses we have had in mill levy, even if we would've just declared and stayed the same mill levy all the way along, we would've been a lot further ahead than if we go to a fifty percent increase. And, you know, everybody has to understand all of those things. They have to understand where it lies and this city's gotta last a lot longer than this council or me in particular. And, uh, I want the best for the city, for everybody. I would like everybody to be able to find things that they could do that would help them in their life that has to do with this city. And we kinda have that mantle right now. I wanna work it going ahead.
I'd just like to make a comment that, to, to me, and, and I mean, you've had the discussion one-on-one. To me, and it maybe is living here as long as I have, to me, it always comes back to the information, right? Getting the right information into the people's hands. Now, you know that obviously for the last few years, we struggled with ideas and, and whatever you wanna call it to get this information out there. And mind you, I, I feel a lot of people living their lives, they, they really, they just live their life, you know, they, it's, it's not, they're gonna read newsletters or they're gonna get online and look at the stuff 'cause really they're not going to. So, to me, it comes down to, uh, a, a company like this is, is, is the hands-on. To me, it's gotta be the hands-on and are we confident that this company is gonna give us that hands-on uh, approach to really getting into the, into the, with the citizens all one on, e- even, I mean, it's almost like you gotta go door-to-door, really.
And, and I think that's the approach they almost take. They will be in every door. That's what I've.
Oh, they're, they won't be going door-to-door, but we will have information in every door. We will have a, 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 a public open house. There will be public meetings that, that will continue to discuss this. And, and there will be information going to each and every home in, in the city, specific to, I mean, everything from e- even the state, should we decide to, to go, to need to look at a, at a tax increase, the state even says, you have to have a certain size of advertisement in a newspaper to be able to, to inform the citizens. So, it's very specific on the, the, the steps that have to be taken to make sure that we get that, that information out there. I'm, I'm confident that they can do it. They're, again, highly recommended for more than, more than just, you know, one entity out there. They're, they're, they've used, been, been used by UDOT, by MAG, by Pleasant Grove City, many, many others.
Is it required or is it considered that they would, uh, have a mail alert so it was delivered everywhere's home?
It's in here.
Yes. At least one, I think, and maybe even two, but I think at least one. Uh, I, there might be two, but then I also know that the county will also send one out, um, at some point in the first couple of weeks of June. I don't, I, I don't claim to know their, but their, um, their, uh, schedule. But I, I'm aware that they do one as well that's separate from whatever effort we do with X Factor. So, again, just trying to get as much information and the right, as Dave indicated, the right information out there to help, to help folks know what, what's being considered.
Well, for me, I, I agree with Dave a hundred percent. This is, it, it makes me feel better about the information that goes out because I may go out and say something different than Dave and not that we're just not knowledgeable about it. As, as knowledgeable as these folks will, they're gonna get the exact information and they're gonna get it out so that it's the same everywhere. It's way better than what all of us can do. Individually, so. Yeah, we could do it, but we're gonna miss a whole lot of people. If we do it this way, we're gonna miss less people.
Well, you know what? They may be even the one, and they've already given me information on how things should be presented in a, in a couple of ways. And that's come with Norm and, and other things. And it's, you know, certain things that do not send the message correctly. And, and we're already kind of caught up in a couple of those things and we need to make sure that we back out and follow the plan that's successful. The thing that I like the very most is the thing that everybody complained about and that was, they did not have enough information to really decide on, was this a good way or will they support this council if we go in this direction? We have to have numbers, we have to have tax information that's out there. That has to be presented in such a package that it makes sense and it answers the question that the people have and us.
Yeah, and, and there's more, sorry, there's more as well. There's social media, there's, there's our website, there's the newspaper. All, all of those will be covered with, helping us all along the way.
I, I'm not, I'm, I guess for me is, and I'm not saying that this company isn't gonna do all those things. That, that, the thing is, is can they, can they, how can I put this? In kinda what Art was saying, can it, can it be in, what is the uniqueness of Santaquin is the issue here, right? Why we're in this position? I mean, it's not what Pleasant Grove, either their issues were or UDOT's issues was, right, Norm? It's, to me, it's, is, we have our, we're in this position because Santaquin's in this position. That's the information I think the citizens need to understand is the position that's, that this city's in, right?
Yeah, much like the, the information that was in, that's in the memo with the packet tonight, very, very exactly true.
One thing on it all, we could all be fat, dumb and happy if the building would've stayed up. If all of the, all of the interest problems had gone away, nobody would've thought any different than the previous councils for the last ten years. But now, we're facing it. And the, the good thing that I think we have is, we're not starting right now. We started last May and June and we were going through everything we could possibly go through right down to first quarter meetings, looking at the budget, changing things, cutting back. And I think that story needs to be knitted into this, that we're just not, oh, look what happened. It's, we've been trying to prepare for this and figure out the best route, you know? If we would've went in last year and said, okay, we've gotta do this now, we didn't have enough information even for ourselves. But at this point, I think we see the writing on the wall in a lot of, in a lot of ways.
And it's almost time for a third quarter report.
Yes, sir.
So, so, so for to me, when we, we had our, that town home day the other night down at Roblox, uh, my citizen, I thought nailed, I thought a, a compliment to you and to the city at this point that, that they've liked our transparency. To me, that's the kinda transparency we've got to go into this with and, and not try to sugarcoat or try to minimize something. It's got, it's got to be that complete transparency, right?
You, you have to know enough about what you're talking about when it comes to dollars and especially dollars out of their pocket to either be convincing or
Right.
show your true colors. And to be convincing means we have to have the answers and we have to have the presentation. And I believe X Factor is the presentation help that we need, not all the answers. We're still gonna have to find our answers. And we have to look at it in every possible way that we can. And I don't wanna be here, but I'm not sure that we have a choice at this point. So. And with that, any questions? Anything else? We'll bring it up. I would appreciate very much, uh, you talk about this particular resolution. It, that it's not just passed, because you may have some questions and questions that we can certainly answer. We've been looking at this. And, uh, I, I just don't want it to appear to the city that we're trying to sugarcoat it with this. We're not. We're trying to get all the information we possibly can into everybody's hands. And if somebody really comes out and says, oh, didn't you look at, you know, grant XYZ that gives you ten million dollars for free? Well, I wish that guy walks in really fast. I've got all the millions I can get. But I'm not giving up yet. Okay. We good? Good? Any, any statements? You guys never say, Dan, you just talk too damn long. Okay, I would entertain a motion. Do we have to talk about any other business? I think we hit it all. Uh, any other things that entertain a motion? Will you adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Dave?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya. I wanna be careful.
Thank you.
Thank you.